And we're live. And good evening. Welcome to the October 27, 2020, meeting of the Stow Board of Selectmen. And I will start off the meeting with any public input. And people can either wave at me or raise their hand electronically. Seeing none, I will move on. And I should have started off. Tonight, we have in person Megan Birch-McMichael, Ellen Sturgis, Jim Salvi, and Courtney Fresha are zooming in. And then myself, Tom Ryan, and then Denise Demkowsky and Maureen McKean, our administrative assistant. So, next chairman's comments. I think most of you probably know Trick or Treating is on for this Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. You can see information on the town's website for recommended best practices. Please try to adhere to them and, you know, be safe out there. In-person early voting is still going on at the town building every day from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. through this Friday. You can enter at the rear door of the building down where the old COA was. You can also drop off mail-in ballots at the official drop box located in the front door of the town building. And as indicated by all of that, I'm sure you all know that Election Day is November 3rd, next Tuesday. So please get out and vote either in person, by mail, or the early voting. Let's see, next, we have two appointments. First one is for Meredith Bartlett as a member of the LA CAC, the Local Access Cable Advisory Committee. Is Meredith on? Yes, I see Meredith is on. Hello, Meredith. I probably need to unmute. If you can unmute, Meredith.
Good morning. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for stepping forward. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Local Cable Access Channel?
I'd be happy to. So I've been a resident of Stow for 36 or 37 years. And the neighbor blog that Roy says. In the 1980s, I served on the Finance Committee for a number of years. I also got into it with the Stow Food Pantry. Obviously, my passion was here in Newtown. And Bob and I have been speaking this summer about this potential opportunity. We're very excited at the possibility of learning new things, meeting new people, and contributing to Stow in any way or way we do useful.
Well, we very much appreciate your stepping forward. Do I have any comments from our board members?
I'll just say it's obviously dangerous to live next to another board member.
We've been neighbors all this time, almost for decades.
Time is up. He finally got you.
Tom, this is Jim. Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
Meredith attended her first LA CAC meeting last week. She was a really good sport. It was a pretty intense meeting because we got this incredibly detailed and confusing, in my mind, presentation from the board's lawyer about strategy. You really had to get down in the weeds for it. And she was a very good sport, and she did not go running screaming from it. So that was a good point.
That's always a good, good sign. Courtney? You probably need to unmute too. You look like you're trying to say something.
I'd please appreciate your stepping forward, Meredith. And thank you for being willing to listen to lawyers getting down in the weeds.
It's weeds indeed, but it's, I was on the FinCom for so many years. I thought those were weeds at the time. And it was at the time of building the building that some of you are in right now. It was a very hairy time to be on a committee. But this is entirely different, and thank you.
A pleasure. Megan?
Sure. Let's see if I can unmute. That's why I can't do that. You don't need to. Can I? Oh. You don't need to. Through the main microphone.
Thank you, Meredith, for stepping forward. We appreciate anyone who is willing to step forward and volunteer in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan.
Same for me.
You want a motion? Ready for the motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to appoint Meredith Bartlett to the Local Access Channel Advisory Committee to fulfill the remainder of a two-year term expiring June 30, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two ayes here. And I see Courtney as an aye. And Jim is an aye. So we are, and I vote aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for stepping forward.
Thanks, Bob, for finding a good one.
Yep. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith.
Bye, everyone. Nice to meet you all. Thank you.
All right. The next is an appointment to the Call Fire Department. Applicant Jack Stafford. Is the chief on?
Yes, he's on.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, chief. Long time no talk.
Yeah, so Jack was a member of our department. He joined back when he was 16 or 17 years old. Couple of years ago, he had a couple of things going on. He ended up leaving the department and moved on. He's been a full, he got appointed as a full-time firefighter paramedic with the town of Wayland. And since that time, he's been able to find some time to work into his schedule to possibly support us. What I consider him, in the construction industry, he's a shovel-ready employee. So he's somebody that can come in and start working shifts almost immediately because he had already completed all our minimum criteria before he left the last time. And it's one of our positions that we're really short on right now is the per diem slash call firefighter that can fill some of those night shifts. We cover 176 hours of per diem shifts a week at that station. So we're just trying to fill those voids with per diem firefighters instead of overtime, full-time firefighters having to take those shifts.
All right. And I don't see Jack on here anywhere, so, which I wouldn't expect necessarily. Comments from the board? Ellen?
No questions.
Megan?
No questions.
Jim, Courtney?
I'm in.
All right.
Ready for a motion?
Motion, please.
I move to appoint Jack Stafford as a call firefighter for the Stow Fire Department for the remainder of a one-year term expiring June 30, 2021, and subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Megan? Helen, aye. Courtney, aye. And Jim is an aye. And I vote aye. So unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Next on the agenda is an application for an outdoor dining license for the Stow House of Pizza at 156 Great Road. Given that the planning board has not signed off on it, and they are working with the applicant to work out a number of details, I would propose that we move no action on that. So if I just a motion, no action on that item?
I'll make a motion to move no action on the Stow House of Pizza outdoor dining license application.
Second?
Any discussion?
I concur. Yep, I agree.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
And that's unanimous. Next up is addition of electronic permitting fee to establish a building department permit fees. Not quite that. It's to fund an electronic system for fees. And Denise, I believe this is your item, if you would like to explain what you're proposing?
It is. And actually, Craig is on the Zoom as it is relative to his department. But I touched upon this a few, maybe just the last meeting. We are looking to automate the building department by bringing an e-permitting system for online building, plumbing, electrical permits. There is no upfront cost, as there are with other electronic systems that I applied for the grant for. With the e-permitting for the building department, it's a $10 flat fee added to each permit pulled, and that covers the cost of the software. So Craig, if you would like to add anything to that, just make sure you unmute.
If you can unmute, Craig.
Unmute there, Craig. Take the mute off.
He's trying.
Where is that darn thing?
Can you do it?
There, we found it. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a wonderful software. It's been in the industry for quite some time. Denise actually had it in, or is still in Groveland. And it's a good starting point for us. It's a pay-as-you-go system. It's a $10 fee that gets added to, like Denise said, any of the building permits. That would include tent permits, sign permits, sheet metal, the routine things that we do. But it's a very good beginning point to get us doing things electronically. And we can build on this at a later date, but this is a good beginning point. And given the circumstances, this allows homeowners and contractors to do everything remotely. We anticipate that we can set up a payment system as well. Maybe not initially, but where contractors or homeowners can pay with a credit card. So Denise and I will work on that if the board supports this, and we'll get it up and running. And there's a little bit of a list of companies that are waiting to get this software in place for other towns. But we're like, you know, fifth or sixth on the list. So we could certainly move ahead, but we needed your blessing first.
Questions from the board?
Sounds like a good idea.
Jim, Courtney?
Thank you. Fine idea.
Also agree. Just one question. Craig, as a percentage of a typical existing building permit fee, how much of an increase does this represent?
Well, we're $10 per thousand. So, you know, varies. It depends on the value of the project. But if, you know, 20% on a, if a base permit fee was $50, that's our minimum, it would be 20%.
Thank you.
How many of the permits are generally $50 or less? Or I'll say $100 or less.
My guess would be that maybe 10% of the permits are in that category. Like I said, everything else is based on $10 per thousand. That's the valuation of the construction work proposed. So my guess is around 10, 10%, 15% maybe.
And will this end up saving you a lot of work?
Yeah, yes. I mean, we need to get trained on this and so forth. But once we get up and running, it's, what's going to happen is it's going to free up our administrative assistant an awful lot. And then ultimately, at the present time, both Doug and I will get freed up as well. So the answer is yes.
Courtney has a question.
Courtney?
How does this change or how do you handle the other departmental sign-offs?
So we would send out, so in the basic permit package, we have sign-off forms that Conservation Board of Health, Tax Collector, Planning Board, and so forth. They would get that electronically in this process. They would review what they get electronically, and they would send it back to us electronically.
May I expand upon that?
Yes.
So it actually works out very well. Once the building department initiates it, as Craig said, he would move it forward. Anyone that's needed gets a link. You can go into the software. You can see the documents. You can see the plans. You can see anything that's pending on it. Being the tax collector in my prior community, if there are outstanding taxes, I put a note right in the permit system. As soon as I submitted that note, it would go back to the applicant. So they would know exactly what was going on. They could log in and see where the process was. It works very well. It's very seamless, especially for those signatures. You know, distributing paper around and waiting for people to sign off and send it back is just archaic at this point. So this will really streamline that part of the process as well.
Wait, I'll just add. The reason I asked is because a year or so ago, I applied electronically for a permit in another town, and my permit got hung up in the departmental signature process. So somebody didn't see or wasn't on top of how it worked in some way. And so I was curious, you know, how easy it would be for somebody to fall through the cracks in a department that was, I don't know.
I mean, that's part of our responsibility here to, and that would be our admin assistant, that what she does, just in the hard copy aspect of things right now, she checks up on all the other departments, what's the status of the sign-offs and so forth. So she would do something similar to that. And it may actually show up electronically. I don't know because we haven't got the training on this software yet. But there may be a way, and Denise may know the answer to this. It may show up electronically once a department signs off on a project. And then if we're checking it on a regular basis, which we would be, then we would notice that quite quickly.
Thank you. I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
Can you turn the Zoom down a little bit?
The speaker.
Turn the what?
Speaker, the volume. Because you guys are here, and Zoom is up here.
All right.
Volume-wise.
So I, well, Tom's doing that. I can respond. So yes, so you can log into the system. And actually, anyone that has backend access can go in and see all the pending permits. Right on the front page, it will tell you how many days it's been pending. It's flagged as a different color depending on how many days. You can go in and see who signed off and when. So as long as there's a regular, you know, even every morning, go in and see where the status is of the permits, it'll be much easier and consolidated in one location than having to look through paper copies to figure out who signed. So as long as there's someone staying on top of it, it will, I think it will definitely streamline it.
And like I said, that would be Courtney in our office, and she is very attentive. So I think this is going to work out great.
I'm totally on board. I hope my question did not suggest otherwise.
Nope. You had the same question I did. In that case, can we have a motion, please?
Sure. I move that the, I move that the board vote to approve a $10 add-on fee to existing building department fees, including but not limited to electrical, plumbing, gas, sign, temporary tents, and sheet metal permits to be used to pay for the new e-permitting system.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Courtney and Jim are aye, so it's unanimous. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Craig.
Thanks, Craig. Thank you.
Next up, we have approval for a surplus property disposal policy. This one, I think, is definitely yours.
Yes. So to follow procurement laws, we're required to have a disposition of surplus policy. This is good. It goes out to all departments. They know what to do when they have equipment or materials they want to get rid of. It talks about if it has a resale or salvage value less than $10,000 and what steps they should follow. If it has no value, what they should do, and if there is a greater than $10,000 value. And it just spells it out. You can put the policy on our website. Everybody's clear what they need to do when they have items to dispose of.
Questions from the board?
I don't, well, my only question is around computers. And it, I mean, it says, I'm not sure if it says, if I read this right. If a computer has no value left, which often happens pretty quickly, but it gets recycled. I'm just wondering if we need a sep, or should there be a separate policy around if we're trading out computers because of the possibility of having proprietary information on it?
So we certainly could. We could add an electronic policy. I don't know if there is one in place.
I think there's probably one.
Probably. I was being optimistic. But yes, we could certainly do something that identifies that. Either we remove the hard drive when we turn in the computer, or as it states here, they have to provide proof that they have destroyed it properly. So we can expand upon that type of policy if you like.
I wouldn't hold this up. I just, it just struck me when it's, it's only mentioned in the paragraph where there might be no value. And I just want to make sure.
Jim, Courtney, any comments?
Just building on that, to add to your growing list of things to do, I actually think that we are overdue for briefing on general security and net, or computer, sorry, I'm not feeling that well, computer and network security issues. And I think that, I think that's a great issue, disposal of unused hard drives. I think that's all part of that. But I agree, I'm going to hold this up. This is great.
Courtney, no comments?
I think it's, I think it's great. I'm on board with it. Thank you for codifying all the policies that may have been followed in some cases, but were not visible.
All right. Do I have a motion then, by any chance?
I move that the selectmen approve the disposition of surplus policy as presented by the town administrator.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All here. And it's unanimous. Jim and Courtney voted aye. Next up, we have a discussion about perambulation.
Perambulation, yay!
As some of you may or may not know, the town is required to go around and mark their bounds every five years, according to Mass General Law. And we were due for it this year. However, COVID and poison ivy and other strange things like that got in the way. And since your name's all over the delin, I will let you take over this.
So I did get to do a bit of perambulation in my last round as select board, and I thought it was really fun. So when Maureen said it was time, I said, I'm in. So I have talked into Greg Troxell, who has been given credit by at least Ross Perry, if not others, including Maureen, as the go-to guy for Stow. For, he's done it several times now and has got lots of technology. It's made it a lot easier. He happened to mention that very few towns actually follow through on their requirements to do their boundary markings, at least not as actively as Stow does. And you can see it in the, I think he said, the Marlboro stones that abut with us, you know, might say 1967, if they're lucky, 77. But that was the last time they did it. So we're much more on top of it than others. But we are required to find all the boundary markers throughout town. I think he said there's about 40 that are still in place. It takes some coordination. It also takes a certain time of year because we can't get too cold. The paint won't stick to the markers. And we don't want to get them buried in snow, though most of them are supposed to be four feet high or something. So we're ready to go shortly. I've got one other select board member who's willing to go along with me. So we don't. Oh, Courtney wants to do it too. So we're going to fight over it. I mean, I think, you know, the only question is, in COVID mode, we don't want to have too many people do it. But, and it sounds like it's going to take several days to get through them all. It's not like it all, you can whip through them in a day. So, but we hope to get this going. I guess what Greg knows the law probably certainly better than I do, and said, we don't need to appoint him as an alternate as long as we have at least two select board members that are willing to do it because that's actually what the statute says. The select board is supposed to come up with the people to do it. So.
Courtney, you're volunteering also.
Probably be better not to have a quorum, though.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Well, one of the things I was thinking about, because I'd be willing to do some of it.
Yep.
And maybe if we split up into a couple of different teams and went out and looked, something like that. It could be like an outing.
Yes.
First, some comments as maybe the most recent guy to have actually done this. I don't know. I did a lot of it in 2010. It is a lot of fun in the right weather. And just set your, I would say, set your expectations realistically. I think you're right. I think there were 40 bounds out there. And a good number of them, you have to do some serious hiking to get to. And you wind up wandering around in the woods because the GPS data is a little notional. It's not exactly where it says it's going to be. But that's actually part of the fun. I remember hearing from Ross Perry that in no given year do you get through all 40.
Right.
But, and the other thing that we did in 2010, I recall, it was a lot of fun. We arranged with the, to meet the selectmen of, I think, Boxborough on Taylor Road and had a photo that was in the Independent.
And Greg said they met with the Acton Selectmen in 2015. He also mentioned that his GPS is now ridiculously accurate. So in fact, it's not hard to find any of them. It's just a question, you still have to bushwhack, but it will take you there. So.
So.
So I don't know if we need to.
I would be happy to make a motion to make you the perambulations czar.
Okay.
I'm happy to participate too. I enjoyed it. Sounds like you have more than enough, but if you find yourself short, let me know.
Courtney?
I think Bill Byron has a comment.
Bill, did you have a comment? You'd have to unmute.
He's looking. Let me tell that look. Nope, still muted, Bill.
There you are.
There, there you go.
I may ask a question. Is the Highway Department in possession of the boundary marker and town line sign from?
Just that street, Bill?
Yes, exactly.
So what I think Bill is referring to is about three or four months ago, maybe longer than that now, pre-pandemic, there was some construction work being done on Chestnut Street. And the contractor took out the sign that marked the boundary with, I think it's Hudson there, and a little concrete marker. And Craig, I thought, did I talk, was I down there talking to you about that?
Yes. Actually, I can answer that question. Highway has both, well, the town sign got completely discombobulated. It wasn't even salvageable. So the responsible party, the contractor, So the, the responsible party, the contractor purchased, paid for a new town sign. Now, that's a street sign for Chestnut Street. We also have the bound. It's a granite bound. It is at highway.
That was my question.
Okay.
And those two are, are ready to go back in. We, Highway, myself, Doug, and the owner are working to get those reestablished correctly.
Thank you.
That's great. That will make Greg very happy. He's, he's got the exact location of where it's supposed to be if you need help with that.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we're having the, actually having the contractor get a surveyor out there to pinpoint the location. So thank you. But we're, we're going to be doing that shortly.
That was going to be my question. I, my recollection was that the contractor is responsible for paying to have it replaced.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
The other, just the last thing was Greg did suggest, given that it does take a lot of time to focus on the, if I'm getting the words right, the actual corner markers as opposed to, there's, there's two sets of markers. One are the ones that are actually the, like, the point of intersection between the towns. And then there's the ones that go, the markers between the two lines, the two dots, which are sort of, so there's, I can't remember how it breaks down, but some are more important than others, shall we say. So we'll probably focus first on, for this year, on the ones that we know, I think there's 12 that we really want to be sure we get marked. And he averages six of three-hour shifts, so we'll see if, you know, depending on how
I was going to say, because if we're two teams, it almost sounded like a challenge to manage, get the 40 done in a year.
Maybe, maybe we should try that.
I mean.
We'll see how the temperatures work in our favor or not.
I agree.
Yeah. Rumor is winter's coming.
Yeah, that's true.
So, eh, I suppose, I don't know if we actually need a real motion, but I would make a motion to appoint Ellen as the, I'll say, in charge of perambulation for the 2020, 2021 perambulation.
Great.
Anybody like to second that?
Second. I'll second it.
Yep.
Second for Courtney. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I will volunteer as you wish. You just can't tell me to do them all and, and not do us. Thank you, Ellen. Next, we have setting of the annual licensing fees for alcoholic beverages. Currently, the restaurants, all alcohol are $2,200 per year. Restaurants, wine and malt only are $880 a year. Package stores, all alcohol are $2,000 a year. And package stores, wine and malt are $880 a year. We also have common vitler license for $25 per year. And Class II used auto sales for $100 per year. Do we have any discussion on these items? Courtney?
I'm curious. I know that last year we voted to keep these the same. I'm curious how often they, if anybody knows how, how frequently they actually change.
My, my recollection is, at least for the 10 years that I've been on, it's probably been the same. And it could very well be quite a bit longer than that. Jim, didn't, a number of years ago, didn't we do like a bit of a survey around different towns, what they were charging?
I think so. I actually thought that there was a small raise two years ago, but I could be wrong.
But my recollection is that they're, they're in line with other towns of our size around here. But they probably have been, you know, if, if anything, they, you know, they haven't doubled or anything in the last 10 years. They're probably fairly close to where they were. The common vitler license, I don't think you can get much lower than $25. And the Class II auto sales, I believe that they've been $100 for years.
So my, my line of thinking was this, that, that this would not probably be a very nice year to raise a license fee on a, on a restaurant. And maybe not on a used car dealer, I have no idea. But I, I suspect that alcohol sales have not been affected by the current situation, adversely at least. So that was, that was my thought.
Tom, Denise says.
Denise?
So a couple of things just on the overall licenses. I do think that if you do a survey, the common vic license is low. I do think $100 is fairly standard for that now. Also, the wine and malt seems low considering what other towns are. They're usually a little bit more comparable to the all-alcohol. That being said, I do think you should consider the restaurant-only licenses, giving some sort of break for the 2021 year, given what has happened in 2020. Many of them did not use their license for a large part of the year. And even now that they have, they still have not rebounded to the levels that they're accustomed to. I think that's not the same for package stores. They probably went over and above what they normally do in sales, but.
They could make it up.
I've done my part.
But I would say many towns are giving breaks to the restaurant licenses for the 2021 season as, as some type of consolidation for what's going on. Constellation.
So, sorry. Would you have a recommendation, especially when you said the wine and malt's sort of on the lower side, but what would you think we should do?
So to be honest, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Some are doing no fee for the upcoming year. Some are doing like a 50% because they have been back open for part of the year.
Right.
It's really preference. You have all different types of establishments. Those that are true function facilities probably have had no business.
Right.
But I think all of your restaurants are in similar, similar situation. So, I mean, I would recommend probably 50% reduction for the 2021 year, but that's just, again, they're all over the place for what cities and towns are doing.
And the, the golf courses are under the restaurant category as well?
Yes, they are.
So how many licenses would that affect?
One, two, three, four, five, six. So I will, it's Stowe Acres, Stowe Golf Course.
Oh.
Butternut Farm.
Stowe, Stowe has a, that should be, they're out of busi- all right.
Not open right now, but they still are maintaining.
But they still are maintaining, huh? Okay.
Butternut, Wedgewood, Nancy's Airfield, and Red Ginger. So now, obviously, the same may not be true for the country clubs versus the true restaurants, but I'm sure they are still suffering in regard to what they normally do in business.
How many, just as a curiosity, do you happen to know how many licenses we have?
Or are allowed.
Are allowed to have? I, in towns, are we at our maximum?
Yeah. I don't think we're the maximum, especially not.
I just, I know that used to come up with planning board and like people trying to open restaurants and stuff.
They changed it a few years ago that they have a minimum and most towns the size still are not at their minimum.
Oh, there's a minimum.
Oh.
I thought, I started trying to read MGL and it was way too confusing. Oh, look, she's got the piece of paper.
The PB invention.
Oh.
Yes, so they.
So this is as of now? Interesting.
That's who's, how many we have now?
So we're allowed nine restaurants, all alcohol, four restaurant wine and malt.
Oh.
Here you go.
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, Maureen.
The mystery is solved. So, so we, okay, so we're thinking of doing 50% for the restaurants and then just leaving the packaged goods, package stores at the same. And, and just to, for everybody's sake, since I had to go look it up, vittular basically is something like Emma's or the convenience store? No, convenience store is.
No, they're under. In order to serve food, you have to have a common.
Okay. So serving.
Serving food.
So they would, that would be someone like Emma's that doesn't have a liquor license serves food.
Yeah.
Correct. So with, I mean, I can, you know, Stowe Golf, Dunkin' Donuts, Nancy's, Stowe Cafe, Stowe House of Pizza, Butternut Farm, another Dunkin' Donuts, Wedgewood, and Emma's Cafe. So anyone that serves food is required to have that.
So Nancy's has to pay two?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they, the common vittler and then the.
Oh, and then the liquor license.
Liquor license.
Right.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And then I would, I would suggest we do for next year, do another survey of cities and towns and put a comparison together so that you can look at, really all fees across the board and just every few years to do that, to make sure we are not falling too far behind with other communities.
You know, and that's it. The reason we haven't raised them in years is, you know, we've been trying to be business-friendly.
That's right.
Right, well, right.
You know? And, you know, it, it is tough for a lot of the small businesses to try to make a buck.
Right.
On the other hand, licensing is part of the cost of doing business anywhere. I don't, I don't think $75 on a, on a vittler's license is really going to make the difference of whether you make it or break it.
Right.
Yep. I suppose I would say keep the auto sales as is, the common vittler as is, the package stores as is. If everybody agrees with those, then we can probably have a discussion about the, the restaurant licenses. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Courtney, you're good?
Yes.
All right. Does anybody have a proposal for the restaurants, all alcohol?
I like a 50%.
Yeah.
Sounds like a fair.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that. I do want to do the survey next year, though. It doesn't mean that we have to raise it, but I do want to know what our neighbors are doing. I do have a sense we're not even keeping pace with inflation. I know that inflation has been huge in the past decade, but still, we ought to have that information.
Right.
Now, Denise, how, you know, this is going to affect our budget by, budgeted income by around $6,000, which is not that much. So you're not terribly worried.
I'm not concerned in the slightest about these six licenses.
All right. Just figured I'd ask the question.
No, that's good.
You know, it's, it's your budget.
I agree.
Of course, you brought it up.
I appreciate you asking.
All right. Do I have a motion then?
Sure. I move that the. Oh, go ahead.
Yes, Courtney.
So do we only have restaurants that either have all alcohol or no liquor license? It just, I wasn't clear whether we were agreeing to reduce the restaurant liquor licenses by 50%. Is that what the, what the agreement was?
It was only, only the restaurant liquor licenses.
Oh, great.
Either an all-alcohol license, which is 2,200, or a wine and malt. And I'm not sure that we have any.
We have one.
We have one that's wine and malt only. So it would be, be those which I think were about six licenses.
Correct. Five, all alcohol, one.
Five, all alcohol.
I want it to be clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I move that the liquor license fees for 2021 are as follows. Restaurants, all alcohol, 1,100. Restaurants, wine and malt, 440. Package stores, all alcohol, 2,000, same as 2020. Package stores, wine and malt, 880, same as 2020. And I move the common vittular license remain the same rate as charged in 2020 for $25. I move that the Class II used auto sales license fees for 2021 remain the same char- as charged in 2020, which is $100.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Two ayes here. Courtney is an aye. Jim is an aye. And I vote aye. So unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have, I'll say a follow-on from last week, or the last meeting, which is formation of a traffic advisory committee as proposed by the town administrator. And that case, Denise?
Yes. So there's been a lot of talk since I've been here about streets and traffic and speeding and neighborhood issues. And in looking through how those are handled, I felt there was not a concise method for how we process those requests or complaints. Most communities have a traffic safety committee, a transportation committee. It's all the same basic idea. So I did put together this policy recommending a trade, traffic safety advisory committee that would clearly spell out what to do when a complaint or a request comes in, what process it goes through, you know, what, how they're going to determine their plan of action. I think the committee, once it's formed, will then put together their own guidelines as to what data might be included if you're going to do speed studies or survey work or anything like that that may go into this. But I feel this will then give the board an informed or information to make that decision. I feel that some of the questions and complaints coming in, if the board starts acting on those individually, we're going to get out of control and have neighborhoods fighting over who wants what. So I think this is a fair process. It would go on our website. We would put an actual form right on there that people can fill out, check off what their concern is, and then that would start the process. As you'll see in the steps, there is a requirement to involve the, the person who initiated the complaint or the concern, have a public hearing, provide feedback to them. I think some of those things have been missing. We have been using our Complete Streets Committee for a lot of these, and that's not really the purview of a Complete Streets Committee. They're supposed to follow the Complete Streets Plan through the state. So they will be, and I apologize because when I put the consultants at the end, I missed the rest of them, but I listed them as a consultant because they would obviously be involved in this process and it's many of the same members that I'm recommending. But I just think this streamlines the process and gives people in town a way to have their issues addressed in a format in similar fashion to everybody. There's no, you know, coming before the board and having favoritism or anything like that. It's a set process that we can follow. So, you know, I wasn't sure if you were ready to move forward on this tonight, if you wanted to have further discussions on it, but that's where we can start.
Comments from the board?
As, sorry, as the planning, this one you spent on the planning board, I think this is phenomenal because I think it sort of very specifically allows an avenue for people to be able to voice these complaints. A lot of the times, they just came to the planning board and it was like, well, why can't you fix this? And that wasn't really the, the best, you know, they weren't the best people to be talking about it, right? Because it does involve police, it does involve fire, it does involve other community buy-in. So I think this is great and I would wholeheartedly support it.
Ellen?
I guess, in terms of who's on it, I, I assume you're, they're all on board with this. I mean, it seems like that would be, these are the logical people to put on it. And I'm, I guess I was wondering, in terms of the resident, I mean, I guess that's sort of a nod to like, you know, somebody who's not basically a paid employee, but, but is that really appropriate or necessary? You know, not that I ever want to talk people out of being on committees, but on the other hand, it's hard enough, so.
Yeah, I mean, and we could certainly look at things like that. I put a resident, just some, so some towns, it's all residents, some towns it's all employees. And then that goes hand in hand with the makeup of the Complete Streets Committee. So again, Complete Street sometimes is fully residents, some it's all employees and sort of a subgroup of the town. I thought it would be helpful to just have somebody else with an outside sense of, you know, how it works and to bring a different perspective. This does require the public hearing process, so there will be plenty of input from residents. Again, the makeup of the committee, it's, that's sort of the standard makeup of what most cities and towns are doing. I have had conversations with the police department, the highway department. I did get some feedback from the planning department. I did not hear back from the fire chief. I contemplated putting him under a consultant's role, but I do feel that the fire department should be involved if we're discussing, you know, anything from one-way streets to lowering speed limits to sidewalks. I mean, they need to make, we need to make sure that their equipment will work and fit down there. So I did add him, again, or designate, doesn't necessarily need to be the chief, but I really felt that that was the core group. Same thing, I went back and forth on making myself an actual member, but then I figured that I'd be better in an advisory role and have them than present to myself and this board, again, to be impartial and, and come in with some informed recommendations.
And that would be the reason not to have a select board member on the committee as well. I guess I'm just a little concerned about who would, what resident would try to be on it, you know, one of those neighborhoods that's having issues and that it's immediately going to cause concern among other neighborhoods, so.
I see what you're saying.
That's, that would be, I mean, and maybe, I mean, as you're talking. That's, that would be, I mean, and maybe, I mean, as you were talking about the common, I mean, sorry, the complete streets committee, which is all residents, right? Is it?
No.
I don't even know who's on it, actually.
I think it's a mix.
Oh, it's a mix, okay. Because maybe, maybe that's the way to get, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, that's, that's my concern about that one position, so.
And I know Jim is on the complete streets, so he could.
Yeah, I'd say something. As somebody who's been on the complete streets for the last several years, I think this is a very, very, very good idea for all the reasons that the town administrator gave. I think it's our best. It's, it's been an awkward fit, to say the least, with the complete streets committee, which does have a similar membership, except, and it does have a resident, and she is from an affected neighborhood, but I think it's very fair to say she certainly hasn't been disruptive and no one's taken offense, and she adds a lot of value. But it is, this is best designed to give us informed choices and recommendations and to make decisions in a systemic way, not an ad hoc way, on an issue that really needs to be addressed. It's also, I think, I like the way Denise has it, where it's very clear where residents will have input. They will know what the progress is here, they will get feedback. I think it's really, really good. In fact, I would like to see us vote to do this, at least conceptually tonight, recognizing that there may be tweaks. I shared Ellen's concern, I want to make sure that the people who are designated to be members won't find out tomorrow morning for the first time that they're on this new committee, but that, that one reservation, I'm, I'm very on board with that. And when appropriate, I have true collective comments, but I just want to say I, I like this.
Courtney?
I like it too. I'm very much in favor, as I kind of said last week, or last meeting. I, I suspect that someone who is, I suspect that the committee may be able to handle a volunteer who has a strong opinion. Hopefully, the chair will be able to handle that, or, you know, really to clear the way that there won't be unnecessary interference in the process. And I just, I think it's great that we're moving ahead with this so that, as Denise put it, it's, it's an easier way to handle requests or, or issues that come up. It's great.
I suppose my thoughts is I was a little hesitant because I thought most of it had been being handled by complete streets, even if it wasn't necessarily the best fit. I do like the process that's been laid out. And I, I do share Ellen's concern about, you know, asking, asking another resident to try to get involved in something like this. But conceptually, I'm definitely in favor of it. I suppose one thought that I had was maybe, as the beginning, to keep it, you know, and my other issue was that most of the people that are going to be on this are also already on the complete streets. So I, I worry about creating another group to handle similar things when, but at, at the same time, there is no structure to the, you know, to the issues that this addresses. Maybe they can, you know, when they're all together, first they put on their complete streets hat, and then maybe they put on their traffic advisory hat because it's got this. But I suppose, you know, to go along with Ellen's part, maybe start out without a resident, see how it goes, and let that group decide whether, you know, they would like to propose adding a resident to it, something like that. It's kind of a, something in the middle, so I don't know how everybody feels about that, but I'm generally in favor of it.
So just two quick things, so there is someone on Zoom that does have a question or has their hand up, but, and I'm fine with that, or if you want to move forward with the policy or the formation of the committee without the members, we could certainly do that too. Because I would want to make sure that there is a fifth person so that we have an odd number of committee members. So if you choose not to move forward with a resident, we should either find someone else throughout town government that would fit that role, or proceed and work to establish the committee now that we have the makeup of it. So either one of those.
Did someone have their hand up?
Yes.
Zero one eight seven, zero one eight seven seven five nine, I don't have a name.
Hi, hi. That's my ID from a, from an association earlier today. Dorothy Brandon, 11 White Pond Road. And I just wanted to comment on having a member that's just a resident from a resident sort of view. I think that overall, that more of a positive. It adds more of the transparency feeling towards these committees. And also, as you talk about a resident being on the committee, some of you are residents too yourself. And I would hope that someone, a resident that was on the committee would just understand they have to, you know, abide by rules and what people, you know, expect. I did want to mention, and maybe Mr. Browski has already, has looked into this, you know, knows about the other towns, as a resource for the group, looking on the Concord Mass website, they have a really well-detailed plan on how to handle the grievances when they come in, not saying that you want to necessarily do it exactly the same way, but they have flow sheets, the forms. They also have a thing where for a certain amount of action to take place, there has to be a certain number of people from that area that, you know, will agree with someone's request so that it's not just one person who may sort of not be looking at things realistically. It just, it just seems like they have a lot of good information. I've looked at it before, and it was very well organized. So that's just a thought there. But I'm glad you guys are thinking of doing this. I think it'll be great. That's all, my comment.
Thank you.
And just to touch upon her comment about the residents, I do think that that's what the operating procedure outlines in more of a broad sense, that obviously, when they conduct a public hearing and one resident shows up, I think the committee could determine that there's either not enough backing, or there's not enough information to move forward, or even when they start with the initial complaint. If there is only one and they, you know, heard from others that it's not something that there's a lot of momentum behind, then they could make a determination at that point. But I still think it should follow those steps until they ascertain whether or not there's enough momentum to move the specific item forward.
All right. Any other comments?
I'll offer a couple of quick comments.
Yep.
On, on your point about the overlap with complete streets, currently, that is true, but these issues have never fit with complete streets. Complete streets should really be about bikes and pedestrians, and to the extent that there's overlap, well, the membership of complete streets is probably, has to be revisited. And they are starting to do that and to streamline it a bit. I don't think that should stop us from moving forward with this very good idea. One little thing I thought, if this is going to be an actual committee, that means it is subject to the open meeting law, which is going to be a little bit tough every time Mike and Jesse and Steve talk about roads. They are potentially in violation of the open meeting law, just something to keep in mind. I don't think that should stop us from doing it. And then another thing, I would urge whoever's on this committee to look at similar roads in other towns. I don't think we've done enough of that. None of our roads are unique. Our neighbors have wide-ish through roads with lots of truck traffic, just like we do. They have roads almost identical to Boxborough Road, Sudbury Road. They deal with them in different ways, you know, I can think of some. And a phone call to them, asking if they get similar complaints and how they've dealt with it could be very enlightening. Of course, we're not bound by any other, but it could help. That's it.
Well, and if the board supports the overall idea, I mean, we could certainly make this, I don't want to use the word working group, but we could make it, you know, a town administrator advisory group so that it's not a formal committee that would fall into the open meeting law so that we don't have those conflicts if we have a department head meeting and we start talking about roads or streets in town. You know, we could certainly do something like that. But still, obviously, with his public hearings and things, there is still a public process included.
Denise, despite my comment, I would urge you not to do that. People want to see this particular stuff being cooked. I'm just issuing a word of caution that everybody on the committee is going to have to watch what they talk about, especially if they start talking about a project that is pending before the committee. I'd rather see it actually be a committee.
Other comments?
I'd be ready to vote on it.
I will accept the motion then.
Okay. On the recommendation of the town administrator, I move to establish a traffic safety advisory committee for the purpose of receiving all requests and suggestions for traffic safety improvement in the town of Stowe, and to evaluate and recommend to the town administrator and Board of Selectmen measures for both short and long-term solutions to traffic issues in the town. The traffic safety advisory committee is to be composed of five members, including the chief of police or designate, superintendent of streets or designate, the fire chief or designate, the town planner or designate, and one resident, preferably with an engineering background. Further, I move to designate the traffic safety advisory committee as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 268A. The resident member must be a registered voter of Stowe and agree to comply with state ethics and open meeting law requirements.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Jim, important, you voted aye. And so did I. We're on to county administrators' report.
Yes, couple things tonight. First, I would like to commend Megan on a job well done last week at the tri-town meeting, although two weeks ago, I guess, already. For those of you who have not heard, it was a three-hour meeting with more than sixty-seven people participating on Zoom. It was my first tri-town, it was Megan's first tri-town, and we were the host town, so she was the chair of the committee. I think she did a great job and really was able to quiet everyone down when things got a little bit out of control. Secondly, just to update the board, so the police chief search committee got underway officially last night. For your information, we received thirty-two resumes. So we actually spent a couple of hours discussing candidates, going through that, narrowing things down. We, so one of the tasks, when I started here, I was told that it was my responsibility to bring in an active or retired police chief to participate in that process. Just so you're aware, it is Chief Thomas Galvin of Berlin, Mass. He was actually fantastic. I will just say, we did proceed under the assumption that it fell under a town administrator appointment, so the board, we did not have a formal selectman appointment. If you all feel differently, we felt we could put it on procedurally. He was sworn in and he did, although we didn't really take any votes last night that we would have needed him to count on, but I just wanted to bring that up, that he was not put before the board as a formal appointment. So if there's any concerns with that.
Denise said I had a conversation about that, and, you know, when she started, I told her that this is one of the things. And after we discussed it, you know, we realized that we hadn't brought it to the board, and that's, that's on me. She felt that it was okay, and if nobody else has a problem, we go, we can go with that. Okay with that? Jim, Courtney?
I am, yes.
And Courtney's still on me.
No, she was nodding.
You were nodding. All right.
Okay, perfect.
Personally, I've discovered the mute button. It's temporary, the spacebar temporarily unmutes you. It's like a microphone button. It's very useful.
So that's great. So we are proceeding, our next meeting is Monday for continued discussion, so I will keep you apprised as that moves along. So COVID update, for those of you that are not aware, Stowe's upgraded to a yellow, higher-risk community last week. We are up to forty cases with seven positive cases in the last two weeks. So I would just like to remind folks once again, stay vigilant, take the necessary precautions. As Tom mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Halloween is coming up, you know, please try and follow the safety guidelines, please stay six feet apart, wear your masks. So many communities in the Commonwealth are starting to roll back the opening process, and I would hate to see that happen here. So if we can all just stay vigilant and stay away from parties, I think we can be good. I would like to congratulate and offer the best of wishes to Valerie Ortheus.
Ortheus.
Thank you. As she leaves us here in Stowe and embarks on a new position, we will miss her greatly here. I've only obviously had a short time working with her, but her contributions to Stowe are really remarkable, and I think she is going to do outstanding in her next position. So I wish her all the best. And then just finally, informational purposes, a few of you know, because I've spoken with you, I'm planning to take a few days off next week. My sister's having a baby, and she is scheduled to be induced right now on Monday, and I will be watching my niece. So right now, I'm tentative Monday through Wednesday. I will send you an email and confirm. I will be checking emails and things, but I figured it was best to just take the vacation time because I won't be able to be on my computer all day long. But if anything changes with that, I'll let you all know. And that is all I have for you this evening.
I'll, I'll just echo that Denise last, last night was elected chair of the police chief search committee. I think everybody else took a...
Very quickly, they did that, by the way. They all backed away from the table.
A great step backwards, but Denise did a great job with it. We actually accomplished a lot more than I thought we would that night, and we had a lot of, a lot of very good input, you know, and what we've done is preliminarily, you know, in one meeting, we've, I'll say, chosen what we felt were the thirteen best candidates to investigate further. And, you know, all the candidate, or all the members came, had input, had looked through the resumes, and I was very impressed. And Chief Galvin, you know, it definitely showed why we wanted a police chief on the committee. He had quite a bit of good insight for us, and I don't know how you felt. I, you're nodding. I think everything went very well.
No, it was a great meeting. It was, I said it in the meeting, it was, it's a great committee to be on. I feel like we had some very interesting conversations and were in, I think, I don't know. It just, it felt very positive leaving that meeting, that we're going to, at the end of this, end up with a police chief that we can all be proud of, and I think that's important, so.
I actually had visions of us, the next meeting being where we are right now.
Yeah, right, exactly.
You know? And so we, you know, under Denise's fine leadership.
Absolutely.
You know, with the credit where it's due. She kept us moving along, and so, you know, it's, but it, it worked out, worked out very well. We had a great meeting, and, you know, we've got the next one scheduled for next week to try to refine things a little bit more. So I just figure I would add that little piece.
Excellent.
And from there, we are on to liaison reports. You know what we'll do is we'll start with Jim, since I saw him first moving around. Jim, what might you have for us?
God forbid, I'm moving out of my own house.
I know, I know.
I don't have too much. Complete Streets had a meeting largely about the transition that I'm talking about. I will just give a preview to me and others, there's that. I will just give a preview to Denise and others, there's that. The planning board staff, mainly Valerie, are working on a supplemental memo, kind of compiling, compiling their analysis of traffic data and accident data on various streets and drawing some conclusions, sort of a handoff memo on this subject from Complete Streets to the new advisory committee. Library building committee did not meet its meeting, I believe, next week, but the librarian drafted an RFR that I have to review and that I meant to contact Denise. I assume she ran it by you, but I hope so. And I know that some of the trustees took a tour of town hall to see if any space there might be appropriate for storage. Because I think we'd all rather use existing potential storage space than consider building or renovating space for storage. Lake Hack had a meeting that I already referenced. I did not mean to suggest that the lawyer isn't good, he's actually quite good. We were strategizing about the negotiations. It's just a very, very technical area that there is a long on-ramp to understanding it. And one thing that I participated in, but maybe Denise wants to talk about it, was the PFAS procurement, the procurement of the licensed site professional. Denise?
Yes. So we met last week. We reviewed the, I believe it was 11 proposals that we received and the committee decided to narrow it down to our top five. Did we do five, Jim? I think five.
Four, I think.
Four, okay. So our top four, we have scheduled a day, the day after Veterans Day, the 12th, that we will be interviewing all four in person, one right after another, and then from there, we hope to move forward with the chosen firm. So I think it was a good meeting that we had. We had, some of us had different ideas and we were able to discuss it and narrow it down to what we thought were really the best of those. So we'll see how the in-person interviews works out, but I would expect by the end of that day, we're ready to move forward.
And that's all I have.
Okay, the spacebar doesn't seem to work for me. Try it another time. Yeah, I admit it. So I don't have much actually, but wanted to note that SMT is looking into continuing their subsidy of, rent subsidy. There were not the anticipated number of applicants for that program, so much of the money allocated is still left unspent. So that will, we will, we will stretch that out and I think perhaps until, I'm thinking December, but I don't want to say erroneously, so stay tuned. That will be, that is going to be extended. Community preservation is meeting November 9th. It looks like there may be a, possibly another project for their December 1st deadline. Probably a small request for, for spring town meeting. And that's what I got.
Any questions? I've just got one question, Courtney, if nobody else does.
Yep.
The authorization for town meeting for the rent subsidies, was that open-ended or did that have a, an end date to it? Oh, I think Denise-
I admit I did not look over the wording before the meeting. I recollect that it was, the intent was specifically to cover April, May, and June and, and what happened was with various delays, it wound up being sort of a retroactive program and I think that was difficult in itself because perhaps some people kind of thought, well, I already paid my rent, so I don't need this anymore, when in fact it could be, could have been used sort of futured. So had they paid rent for April, May, and June, they might still get the assistance which could be applied to a future month. And it was hard to make that all clear. So I may be, I apologize, I'm not well informed.
Denise may have some input on that.
Yes, so I can speak to that.
Thank you.
So the article did state through June. However, most communities have left it fairly open-ended because when their town meeting came up, obviously no one knew what to expect with COVID. I was on the CPC meeting last week or the week before and they did vote to extend the funding through the end of the calendar year. They figured they'll wait and see what happens in the next few months. If they want to extend it again, that's fine. Some communities had, I did provide CPC and SMT with a spreadsheet of all of the community preservation communities that have implemented this type of program and it actually showed how much money and when it was available through. Because I think the belief now is, you know, people aren't going to feel the effects of this for still several months to come. So they did not want to, number one, sort of shortchange the applicants they had that may not have needed the assistance right off the bat, and then they did not want to limit it. So part of the CPC's proposal or, I think, vote was to open it back up for additional applicants. So they were going to extend the program to allow more people to apply to participate in it through the end of the year. I still think there will be a significant number, amount of money left in there as of December and depending on what happens, overall, that may be extended again. Some communities chose to just say the program will be in existence until the funds run out, which I think as we get closer to, you know, the winter months, you'll see more communities take that approach. But for right now, we have extended it through CPC through December. There is no legal vote required of this board or, and I will say, so I want to clarify what I stated earlier. The article at town meeting did not have a date. The presentation had a date, so that was part of the confusion. So it was my opinion, after working with CPC for many years in other communities, that that did not require any additional town meeting action. That was really informational only. And quite candidly, even when there is a date in a community preservation article, it's not legally applicable under community preservation guidelines. You can't really put a limit to when the money is available. So that being said, the recommendation was to inform this board and then have CPC vote to extend the use of the funds, which they have done.
I, that's it. I had it in my mind that there was an end date and I wanted to make sure we as a town didn't get into trouble. You know, so it's, you know, that's it. We, you know, I was thinking that maybe we could have taken some responsibility for it or something, but, you know.
And SMT did talk to town council to make sure that it was-
Okay, so I'm good with that. Megan?
Hi. So tri-town, as Denise said, was two weeks ago. Our next one is going to be November 17th. Lancaster is hosting this time, so that will be coming down the pike. My guess is we'll be putting agendas together, or hopefully, well, we don't have to put agendas together. They'll be hopefully requesting agenda items from us in the next couple of weeks. I know I've, I've been approached by a couple of people wondering if the school is also going to be on the tri-town agenda, if more of the school reopening. I honestly have no idea at this point. It really is under Lancaster's purview as to what they put on the agenda. Planning board is meeting tonight. They met last week. I sat on that meeting. This Stow House of Pizza thing had come up and so I'm glad that we moved in that direction. And I think that's about it. They've got a couple of public hearings coming up, November 10th, I believe. What else? The LBC meeting is tomorrow night, the Lincoln Commission. I've asked the chair to let me know if there's any issues there that we need to be aware of. What else? Let's see. The school committee is meeting tomorrow night. Again, I have been checking in with our local reps just to make sure that there's, if there's anything that is being mentioned in any of those meetings that we need to be aware of.
Building committee? I thought they were meeting last night.
They were supposed to be last night, yes. The, the school committee had a five-hour meeting last week- That's right. And they scheduled a subsequent meeting for yesterday. That's right. It was yesterday, not tomorrow night. I have the weeks messed up. I'm sorry.
What is today?
It's been a lot. Yes, they did. And so I'm not sure, that's right, I wanted to look at the minutes to see if they had moved forward with the building committee. I, I don't know. I actually spoke to the chair of the school committee today and she did not mention it. So I don't know what they proceeded to do with that. I know I did speak to, as you all know, I've reached out to the school committee on my feelings on the building committee. I did hear from several members that they were supportive and had done their own research, but I don't even know if they got to it or what they were able to do yesterday. Yeah, I think the hard thing on that one is that we have not had a building committee that has been the three towns in how long?
Probably 25 years.
No, hasn't been that long. Our babysitters were going through high school.
Oh, because there was a renovation.
A renovation, so.
I thought that was about 25 years ago, wasn't it? Between 20 and 25.
Well, yeah, it has to have been 20 years.
We're dating ourselves.
No, no kidding. Oh, God.
But anyway, I do think the, the point is that, that the towns have grown in size and I do think that because it's still-
Well, there wasn't an MSBA then either. It was a different process, so.
So, so anyway, as soon as I have, or Denise or I have further information on that. I think that's all the committees I'm part of at this point, except for the police, the police chief search committee, which, again, I can't say how excited I am to be on this committee. It's really, it's good.
Let's debalance out tri-town.
So, so I'll ask you the question I asked last night. You like root canals too, going through 30?
Apparently. I also wanted you for regulation and I like volunteering for all of this stuff, so yes.
There you go.
That's all I got.
Ellen?
So the only committees I, that met since our last meeting was Cemetery. I got to meet the Cemetery Committee and I feel like I'm in the, I'm in the grasses. I've got recreation and I got Cemetery and, anyway. So, so that was good. Nothing particularly to report on that. One thing I noticed, Minuteman is doing tours for their prospective students for next year and I don't know if anybody has been to Minuteman, particularly since the new school opened last year, but I'm going to ask Alice if we can schedule a tour because it's really, I remember going to see it before it was, you know, before they renovated and it's sort of amazing how much they get done there, especially they did it in the old building. So I'm excited to see the new building. So if anyone's interested, they should let me know and we'll figure out how to not break open meeting law by going on a tour together. But we did do it before when I was on the board. We had, we even had lunch, so, I mean, can't do lunch now, but we can do a tour.
I think you just have to set it as an open meeting, right? Because planning boards have to do like-
Site visits.
Site visits and we just have to set it as an open meeting.
So, yeah, but that's, that's, that's it for me.
Yep, and police, fire, highway, they're all doing good. Hopefully we don't get much snow. Snow in October. I don't know if you remember, if you remember the Halloween storm a few years ago?
Yes, I do.
Towns were out for two weeks.
That's right, that was a fun one.
Without power, different areas.
That was a few years ago too.
Yeah.
Anything from Board of Health?
I have not talked to them there. I did want to mention that, as Denise mentioned, she had talked to the chair of the school committee after the tri-town. Chair of the school committee reached out to Megan and myself, me as chair, Megan as the school committee rep, wanted to have a conversation about communication, so right now Denise is in the process of setting up a meeting with us, you know, the superintendent, chair of the school committee, Megan, myself, and Denise. And so probably next week, so, no, a week after, a week after sometime, you know, but the, you know, the concept is that after the, tri-town was rather contentious to try to make sure that we've got good communications going and things like that. She was complimentary of Megan's handling of the tri-town, you know, but it's, hopefully, we'll get, we'll have a good meeting out of that. I had a, you know, I probably had close to an hour conversation with her the other day after she reached out to me, so. And Megan's been in the loop the whole time, so.
Sure have.
I was just disappointed that the tri-town had fallen off over the years because, I mean, that was why it was a great thing to have. When you're not having problems to have regular, I mean, the whole point of tri-town was bringing, basically, the three towns that had issues with a common school together and that, we had that communication going, so it wouldn't wait until it was sort of an explosive situation, so I hope we relearn that. It's worth keeping going.
It's worth, it's always been worth keeping going, I think, but I think some of it, there got to be a little bit of fatigue. At one point, it was every month that it, you know, but nothing, nobody was, had anything to say. So I, I think Denise and I may have actually talked about it, that maybe, you know, quarterly might be a better thing that we could talk about. I think we talked about something like that, so that, you know, we keep the lines of communication going, things like that, so that, you know, rather than, you know, every six months or once a year.
Right.
So, you know, I think there's probably a balance to it. And then coming into town meeting, there may be more, it may be more frequent, but then, you know, it may go six months between, you know, town meeting and, you know, the beginning of the school year or something, who knows? But, you know, we should have, you know, like I say, I had a very good conversation with Kathy, so. And she remembers a long way back too. I was actually surprised. She said that she was on the Hale Building Committee with Bill Regan.
Well, she was the principal then, right?
Was she principal?
She was principal at Hale. So, been around a while.
What, yeah, we're, like I said, we're dating ourselves. But that's pretty much all I've got right now. And on to meeting minutes. We have one set. If we start moving along, you might be able to be out of here. We have minutes of October 13th, 2020. Any comments, additions, changes?
Is it 20, oh, October 13th.
October 13th.
Oh, I think I misstated and said the Lake Boone Association and it's actually the Lake Boone Commission.
Got to get those.
Sorry, I, that was mine. I'm on so many subcommittees, I just don't know what they are.
Which one?
That was under liaisons.
Page five.
Yeah, and I just had, sorry, I didn't read the minutes before tonight. On the Council on Aging, my, in my liaison report also, page five, there, it's, the Council on Aging is concerned about the no cash payment plan. I mean, interest is sounding more positive. They're worried about it, so I just want to clarify that. I don't want them to think that I said, "Oh, yeah, you love it."
Courtney, Jim?
Jim must have sent a compliment.
I'm good.
Good.
The only thing I came across, I suspect on page four, I'm surprised Jim didn't pick this up. That's why I gave it a chance first. I believe that when we ended up doing the resident at large, that Ellen or that Megan made a motion for Zach. And I think Ellen, you seconded it.
I did.
And it says Mr. Selby seconded it.
I didn't see that. Thank you.
You would have gotten credit for something you didn't do, Jim. Other than that, I was okay. In that case, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Oh, 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 shoot, I'm jumping to the left. Right, oh, right, we have to approve these.
I, I will let you withdraw that one.
I'm ready. Okay, that's the one I, yeah. Make a motion to accept the minutes of October 13th, 2020, as amended.
All in favor?
Duncan?
We're falling apart now, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
We do have correspondence, and if anybody.
Oh, correspondence, right.
See, there is, we're all screwed up on the order.
Can I ask about the MDR application that's here? Is, is that for, I know a property that's for, it's to keep it agriculture, correct? Okay.
And I expect we'll, you'll be, probably be setting something up for that, because they're asking us to, you know, for the next meeting, because we'll, I think we're going to be asked to waive our 120 days of discussion over it. I think that's, you know, I just skimmed it quickly.
Yep. So you'll be required to read the, if you agree, to read the consent to reduction of notice period. And then if you choose to act upon the 60-day versus the 120-day, we will just notify the necessary parties. It does not require a formal public hearing, it just has to be on a posted, a publicly posted meeting notice.
Yep. So I expect, we'll see that for the next meeting.
And Maureen has spoken with Ms. Davies from MDR, and I have spoken to Senator Eldridge's office, who has an interest in this as well, so.
Apparently, they've been working on this APR for about four years.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Very exciting.
Jim, Courtney, anything else on there?
No, thank you.
Ellen, Megan?
Good.
The only thing I was going to bring up is, it looked, there was a note in there from the governor's office about the state budget, and it looks like they might finalize their budget in four to five weeks, which, so we might see something by Jan. Everything might be finalized by January, so I'm glad we didn't hold our breath waiting for a town meeting in December.
And they are still waiting to see what happens next week with the election before they can finalize. So they're waiting to see if there's any additional federal funding, or what changes with the coronavirus relief money, so those are all sort of open air, still.
So I think you've got one, you've got the next item.
Well, Courtney was on, Courtney's already. Courtney, go for it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Thank you very much, everyone.